Good evening. This, the eighteenth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Senior Pastor Stephen L. Thomas, Jr. of Zion Baptist Church of Christ. If everyone will please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Great God, we thank you for another opportunity to assemble here in this great hall. We pray that your Spirit guide us, that your wisdom inspire us as the members of this honored body work to promote safety, education, and prosperity for every community in our great city. May your voice bellow in our hearts and be evident in our acts as we pray collectively in the name above all names and as I pray individually in the name of Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank Pastor Thomas for the invocation. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we will call him.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Rob Kawalski from City Farms, who is coming to tell us.
City Fam.
City Fam? Okay. Who's going to come and talk to us about what he does.
I'm just going to read something and then I'll speak from my heart. Thank you for your time and opportunity to introduce you to City Fam. As you can see from the map provided, we are already at work in Baltimore City and we're looking to grow our impact further in 2018. City Fam is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to connect people with purpose. We serve both the causes in our communities as well as the people within them in three specific ways. One, we coordinate volunteers and service events to do the good work of the great organizations throughout and around Baltimore City. Two, we lead people to serve and give to those organizations in order to continue the good work of the community. And three, we keep people connected through events, programs, and social events so they will continue to live their lives to its full potential and purpose. City Fam has already served many of the organizations and people in your constituency through some of our ongoing activities, including Service Saturdays, First Friday Renegade Socials, and flagship events such as MLK Day of Service, Unity in the Community, and the Southwest District Police Cleanup. Today, City Fam asks our City Council for only one thing. We ask that you, we ask for you to lead us to more organizations in your districts that need our service, support, and strength. Can we sit down and talk about how City Fam can grow a presence in your district? So I'm the CEO and founder of City Fam. I'm passionate about City Fam because when I was looking to make positive changes in my life, I found a hard, I found a hard time finding people to do things with or things to do. And the sense of isolation and loneliness caused me to go back to some destructive habits. And it was only through the church that I was able to make positive changes in my life. The problem is eighty percent of our population doesn't go to church. And I think we go about service all wrong, right? We try to get people to volunteer at, you know, we just try to get them to volunteer before they ever, like, who shows up at a soup kitchen by themselves? Not many people will do that. City Fam goes about it a little different. We do social events that get large numbers of people to come out. We call them Fun Without Regrets. And then we bridge them to service. We take a portion of the money that we raise, and then we say, hey, look, guys, we're going to go fix this problem in our community together. And what happens is when people start socializing in healthy community and they start giving back of themselves, they become a better version of themselves. And they stop making so many problems because now they're fixing problems. Because I used to make a lot of problems before I started volunteering. But when I became part of the solution, it felt so good that I stopped making problems. So City Fam gives a lot of volunteer hours, but more importantly, we change individuals. So, thank you. And by the way, I just would love to get your contact information so I could talk to you about what's going on in your district and how we can help because we can mobilize large numbers of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, and thank you for all that you do to make Baltimore City a better place. It is the Council of Customs Generalize the invocation. Actual motion, generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Now perceived, the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general proceedings from the September eleventh City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is it most approved, the journal? Motion by Councilman Chairman Costello, second by Chairman Bullock. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, journal is adopted. Executive nomination withdrawn.
EA seventeen dash zero zero four nine, Aaron N. Tomarcio, Member Civil Service Commission.
Executive nomination.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six two, Andre M. Davis, City Solicitor, Law Department, District fourteen.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six three, Henry J. Raymond, Director Finance Department, District eight.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six four, Thomas J. Stosur, Director Plan Department, District fourteen.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six five, Henry J. Raymond, Board of Directors, Parking Authority of Baltimore City, District eight.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six six, Elizabeth Alex, Member Hispanic Commission, District three.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six seven, Juan J. Barban, Member Hispanic Commission.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six eight, Marley Cardona Mas, Member Hispanic Commission, District fourteen.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six nine, Gabriel Casares, Member Hispanic Commission, District twelve.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero seven zero, Fabiola Donato Galindo, Member Hispanic Commission, District four.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero seven one, Flor de Maria Guisti, Member Hispanic Commission, District five.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one two three, Franchise Brideway over Linden Avenue for the purpose of granting a franchise to Maryland General Hospital, Inc., to construct, use, and maintain an elevated bridgeway that is to be located above and across Linden Avenue approximately two hundred sixty point seventeen feet north of the southern building line on the northernly side of Madison Avenue to connect a proposed new hospital building on the west side of Linden Avenue with the existing main hospital building on the east side of Linden Avenue, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one two four, City Streets Opening Portion of a Four-Foot Alley Extending from West Eager Street for the purpose of condemning and opening a portion of a Four-Foot Alley extending from West Eager Street southerly seventy-five feet, more or less, to the outline of the property known as nine seventeen Cathedral Street, as shown on plat one fifty-eight A seventy-eight in the Office Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one two five, City Streets Closing Four-Foot Alley Extending from West Eager Street for the purpose of condemning and closing a Four-Foot Alley extending from West Eager Street southerly seventy-five feet, more or less, to the outline of the property known as nine seventeen Cathedral Street, as shown on plat one fifty-eight A seventy-eight A in the Office Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one two six, Sale of Property Portion of a Former Bed of a Four-Foot Alley Extending from West Eager Street for the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council of Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, all its interests in a certain parcel of land known as a portion of the former bed of a Four-Foot Alley extending from West Eager Street southerly seventy-five feet, more or less, to the property outline known as thirteen fifteen West Eager Street, in all need for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one two seven, City Streets Opening Portion of a Ten-Foot Alley Line Between North Milton Avenue and Rose Street for the purpose of condemning and opening a portion of a Ten-Foot Alley Line Between North Milton Street and Rose Street, extending from North Milton, North Milton Street, easterly one hundred seven point two feet, more or less, to the west outline of the property known as twenty-four thirty-nine North Avenue, as shown on plat one twenty-nine A thirty-nine, in the Office Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one two eight, City Streets Closing Portion of a Ten-Foot Alley Line Between North Milton Avenue and Rose Street for the purpose of condemning and closing a portion of a Ten-Foot Alley Line Between North Milton Avenue and Rose Street, extending from North Milton Street, easterly one hundred, one oh seven point two feet, more or less, to the west outline of the property known as twenty-four thirty-nine North Avenue, as shown on plat one twenty-nine A thirty-nine A in the Office Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one two nine, Sale of Property Former Bed of a Portion of a Ten-Foot Alley Line Between North Milton Avenue and Rose Street for the purposes of authorizing the Maryland City Council of Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, all its interests in a certain parcel of land known as the former bed of a Ten-Foot Alley Line Between North Milton Avenue and Rose Street, extending from North Milton Avenue, easterly one oh seven point two feet, more or less, to the west outline of the property known as twenty-four thirty-nine North Avenue, in all need for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one three zero, City Streets Closing Tuwanda Avenue and a Portion of Suffolk Avenue for the purpose of condemning and closing Tuwanda Avenue, extending from Jewett Park Drive, northeasterly five hundred thirty-seven feet, more or less, to Suffolk Avenue, and a Portion of Suffolk Avenue, extending from Tuwanda Avenue, northeasterly two hundred ten feet, more or less, to the southeast side of Northlake Avenue, as shown on plat two four two A seventy-six A, in the Office Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one three one, Sale of Property Former Beds of Tuwanda Avenue and a Portion of Suffolk Avenue for the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council of Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, all its interests in certain parcel of land known as former bed of Tuwanda Avenue, extending from Jewett Park Drive, northeasterly five hundred thirty-seven feet, more or less, to Suffolk Avenue, and in a certain parcel of land known as the, known as a portion of the former bed of Suffolk Avenue, extending from Tuwanda Avenue, northeasterly two hundred ten feet, more or less, to the southeast side of Suffolk Avenue, in all need for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero four four R, Recognizing September as National Recovery Month for the purpose of recognizing that September is National Recovery Month and recognizing the important work that many service providers and advocates are doing to help those with mental illness and substance abuse disorders achieve recovery. Sponsored Sneed, Henry, Costello, Scott, Schleifer, Pinkett, Dorsey, Bullock, Burnett, Cohen, Middleton, Clark, Riceinger.
Chair, please note Councilman Stokes is co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Chairman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that this is really important because it affects so many people in our community. Mental illness is really a condition that affects a person thinking, feeling, and it affects their mood. One in five adult experiences a mental health condition. One in seventeen lives with a mental illness like schizophrenia or actually bipolar. And so I just want to make sure that we, and I thank my colleagues for recognizing that this really affects so many people in our community and knowing that we want to not stigmatize them, but actually help them to be, basically be better citizens and get the help that they need. So I asked my colleagues if you would suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Chairman Sneed.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Council President.
You're going to move?
Oh, and I would like to move it forward.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of adopting Resolution seventeen dash oh oh four four R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this resolution is adopted. I didn't see my name on this. I didn't sign it. Okay. Please note Council President Young is co-sponsor.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero four five R, Request for State Action Supporting Clean Energy Jobs. For the purpose of supporting changes to the state law to increase renewable portfolio standards, renewable portfolio standards law for electricity at fifty percent renewable energy by 2030, investing in clean energy workforce development while targeting economically displaced parts of the state and individuals who have historically experienced barriers.
Go ahead.
To employment. Making more funding available for investment capital and loans to help minority women-owned businesses enter and grow within the clean energy economy and phase out incentives for the incineration of trash under Maryland's current RPS law for renewable power. Sponsored Clark, Henry, President Young, Costello, Scott, Schleifer, Pinkett, Dorsey, Bullock, Cohen, Burnett, Middleton, Sneed, Riceinger.
Please note Councilman Stokes is co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you all for joining us for the press announcement this afternoon. We are the first subdivision in the state of Maryland to support the launch of this effort to raise the ante so that we achieve fifty percent of the renewable energy goals in electricity by 2030. Right now, it's moving toward twenty-five percent, and that's a good move, but we want to go further by the year 2030. I'd like to acknowledge the presence here with us in the chambers of three major movers of this effort. First, and I asked them if they would stand, Vinnie DiMarco, who is the founder of Maryland Clean Energy Jobs Initiative, Brooke Harper, Chesapeake Climate Action Network, there she is, and Kristin Harbison, the Maryland League of Conservation Voters. Thank you all for being here to support us, and thank you for your efforts in Annapolis because we, I hope we'll have an unanimous support of this, but when we get to Annapolis with these leaders, we've got to sort of duke it up. So, thank you. And Mr. President, I'd like to move to suspend the rules to permit immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Stokes, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, rules are suspended.
Move the adoption of the resolution and send it to Annapolis with our love and support.
Second by Councilman Stokes, all those in favor of adopting Resolution seventeen dash oh oh four five R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, and this resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero four six R, Request for State Action, Police Redistricting for the purpose of calling on the Baltimore City Delegation to the 2018 Maryland General Assembly to secure enactment of legislation requiring the Baltimore City Police Department review and adjust police district boundaries after the information from each decennial census becomes available to ensure that Baltimore's security resources are allocated as efficiently as possible. Sponsored Scott, Henry, Costello, Schleifer, Pinkett, Dorsey, Burnett, Bullock, Cohen, Middleton, Sneed, Clark, Riceinger.
Please note Councilman Stokes is co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman, I mean Chairman, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as you know, this is a topic that we almost got to the finish line last year in Annapolis. It was actually passed the House of Delegates unanimously, but we have since then had the Police Commissioner and other folks explain to folks on the Senate side that this won't negatively impact our consent decree, and we hope this year we can make it past the finish line. So we're going to go again and try again. Hopefully, we're successful. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero four six R, Calling for an Expansive Auxiliary Police Program in Baltimore for the purpose of calling on expansive police auxiliary program and the expanded use of telephone and online crime reporting in Baltimore. Sponsored Scott, Schleifer, Costello, President Young, Henry, Pinkett, Dorsey, Bullock, Burnett, Cohen, Middleton, Sneed, Clark, Riceinger.
Please note Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, Baltimore is experiencing a crisis of violence. Our violence is at epidemic levels, in my opinion, and if we had two hundred and forty-nine murder victims in the city of Baltimore as of the beginning of this council meeting, and I'd like to ask Council Vice President Middleton offer a moment of silence for them and their families at the end of our meeting, that should mean that we are starting to change the way we operate. There was a time that in the city of Baltimore that we had three hundred sworn police officers, over a thousand or eleven hundred of them in patrol, but today it's about seven hundred officers in patrol. Seven hundred. Five years ago, it was a thousand. We have not changed the way we operate it. We simply cannot continue to afford to operate the same way as we did when we had a thousand officers taking patrol calls when we have seven hundred. When you go to other major cities across the country, I was in New York to watch the Orioles get obliterated on Saturday by the Yankees. Traffic detail. Auxiliary police from NYPD were a part of the traffic detail, meaning that sworn NYPD police officers did not have to solely do that. Minor accidents here in Baltimore, we call them Signal Thirty accidents. And actually, inside the resolution, it'll tell you that as of last week, there were already twenty thousand of those reported in the city of Baltimore this year. That's twenty thousand times an officer, sworn police officer, had to spend, at least typically longer than that, twenty minutes, thirty minutes, an hour, dealing with a minor accident that in many places, sworn police officers do not take those calls. All they're there for is to make sure that the information is exchanged hands. Auxiliary police would allow the city of Baltimore and the residents of city of Baltimore to have their police officers do exactly what they call all fifteen of us every day to do. Worry about the people shooting people, robbing people, breaking into homes. But we still want to operate as if we have been operating all these years. We are in a state of emergency, and it's time that we started acting like that. In addition, for those of you who were here the last term, we know we worked with the Police Department through a resolution just like this that I sponsored, to bring the ability for us to report minor crimes online, to bring back the telephone reporting unit so that minor incidents that are not emergencies, now are one is supposed to be for emergencies, for them to, citizens to have that ability to, again, free up our police officers to do the very thing that we want them to do, so that they can be proactive. They don't have time to be proactive because their resources are so thin that they're going from call to call to call. Shifts are going out extremely short. So we're looking forward to having this discussion with the Police Department about bringing on trained auxiliary officers so that we can continue to operate and make our city a safer place. Thank you.
Thank you, our councilmen. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. You can find the Consent Count in Section Eight of the Back of the Genie. Is it most approved, the Consent Count? Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Riceinger. All those in favor of approving the Consent Count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this count is approved. We now move the bills on second reader, second nominations.
EA seventeen dash zero zero four seven, Teresa Epps Cummings, Esquire, Member Ethics Board.
Chair recognizes Councilman, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA seventeen dash zero zero four eight, Pamela Marie Salisbury, Member Civil Service Commission.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five four, Michelle Porcel, Director, Department of Transportation, Eleventh District.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five five, Sabrina Johnson Turner, Esquire, Member Ethics Board.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Nomination is confirmed. Solace May confirmation.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five six, Tom, Previous Member Planning Commission.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five seven, Robin Allen, Member Planning Commission.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman, Chairman Riceinger. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five eight, Talibah Horn, Member Planning Commission.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five nine, Davon Barber, Member Planning Commission.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by, who said that? Costello. Second by Councilman, Chairman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six zero, Victor Clark, Jr., Member Planning Commission.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA seventeen dash zero zero six one, Sean Davis, Member Planning Commission.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero seven six, Urban No. Coldstream Homestead Montebello Amendment for the purpose of amending the Urban No. Plan for Coldstream Homestead Montebello to modify the provisions of certain land uses in the plan, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance several, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard this bill on September fourteenth. There are technical amendments on my, on my colleagues' desks.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill is amended. Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Yes, I move the bill favorable. It was amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero seven seven, Appeal of Rosemont Urban No. Arian Plan for the purpose of repealing Ordinance zero three dash five zero nine is amended by Ordinance sixteen dash five four zero, which established the Rosemont Urban No. Arian Plan and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee also heard this bill on September fourteenth. There are no amendments. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves to third reader. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine five, Public Ethics Law, City Board of Liquor License Commissioners Conformance to New State Law for the purpose of amending the Baltimore City Public Ethics Law to comply with Chapter five one nine, two thousand and nine acts of the General Assembly, which subjects the members and employees of virtually all local liquor control, local liquor control boards and local boards of liquor license commissioners, including the Baltimore, including the Baltimore City Board of Liquor License Commissioners, to the restrictions and requirements of the Maryland Public Ethics Law and consequently under the exclusive jurisdiction of the Maryland State Ethics Commission, under the, under the exclusive jurisdiction of the State Ethics Commission and providing for a special, and providing for a special effective date coinciding with the effective date of Chapter five one nine.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. We held a hearing on this bill on September twelfth. At this time, I move the bill favorably.
Second by Chairman Cohen. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one one two, Assignment of Qualified Energy Conservation Bond Allocation for the purpose of assigning the Maryland City Council of Baltimore's allocation of the national bond volume cap for qualified energy conservation bonds to the Maryland Clean Energy Center to finance solar electric projects for low-income residents located in the city and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. We held a hearing on this bill on September twelfth. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill is amended. Chair recognizes Chairman Costello. He says he had amendments to the bill, right?
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passes.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two four, Sale of Property Three oh one through three eleven North Warwick Avenue for the purpose of authorizing the Maryland City Council of Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, all its interests in certain properties known as three oh one through three eleven North Warwick Avenue, in all need for public use, and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero seven two, Zoning Condition is Conversion of One Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R. Zone District, twenty-two twenty-nine Calo Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of one dwelling into two dwellings in the R. Zone District on the property known as twenty-two twenty-nine, twenty-two twenty-nine Calo Avenue is outlined in the company plat. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Request for return under City Council Rule thirteen dash three. Chair recognizes Chairman Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move to invoke Council Rule thirteen dash three to request the return of Bill seventeen dash zero zero four two.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of invoking this rule to return Council Bill seventeen dash oh oh four two, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill is returned. Chair recognizes Chairman Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move to adopt an additional set of findings of facts as adopted by the Land Use Committee at the July twelfth, two thousand and seventeen hearing.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving the judicial finding of fact, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Chairman Riceinger.
President, I move to the bill to third reader to be held over for one meeting.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of moving the bill to third reader, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, the bill is on third reader. Will be held one meeting. Committee announcements, over here. Who has them over here? Chair recognizes Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just a reminder that tomorrow here in the chambers at four PM, the Public Safety Committee will have a hearing about overdoses in Baltimore with the Baltimore City Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed. We get our first round. Thank you. Committee announcement. Committee announcement. Chair recognize Councilwoman Sneed. We get our first rubber.
Thank you. The Labor Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing on Thursday, October the nineteenth at one P M. right here in the council chambers for the purpose of requesting that the Department of Finance, the Department of Human Resources, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, the Employees Retirement System, the Fire and Police Employees Retirement System, and the Labor Commissioner brief the city council on Schedule twenty twenty termination of prescription drug coverage for Baltimore city employee retirees.
Thank you. Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wednesday, September the twenty-seventh at ten A M., the Executive Department will hold a hearing on Andre Davies for City Celeste Law Department, Henry Raymond, Director of Department of Finance, Henry Raymond, Director, Board of Directors, Partner Authority of Baltimore City, and Thomas Stosar, Director of the Planning Department. The Executive Department's Committee will hold a hearing on October the fourth, beginning at ten A M., to review the nominees to serve on the Hispanic Commission. Elizabeth Alex, Juan Barbara Ann, Molly Mars, Gabriel Casares, Fiona Donate Galindo, and Flor De Mar- De Mir- I'm sorry, Flor de Maria Guesti.
I have problems too.
Flor de Maria Guesti. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Regular announcements. Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Chair recognize Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to say that on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at five thirty at the Humanaum Building at seventeen oh one North Gay Street, the Forty-Fifth District State Central Committee will hold its interviews to fill two vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize you, Councilman Dorsey, will the City Council Glee Choir sing Happy Birthday to Councilman Cohen? All in one, come on. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Huh? Thank you. Happy birthday to you, Councilman. Chair recognize Councilman Dorsey. We have to work, Glee Club.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just one thing I want to bring up going on in the arts this weekend. It's also relative to recent actions from this council and the city, the administration. I know we were all proud to, to move, to support the removal of the Confederate monuments in the city, and I, I had some discussions with the council president and staff a while ago about, you know, whether we should hold hearings about kind of what to do next, but at the same time, I was talking to activists and advocates throughout our city's arts community about how they wanted to have a voice in this process of determining kind of what happens next. We're really very fortunate in Baltimore to have a group of advocates who recognize the challenges that our arts community faces because it is as segregated as the rest of this city. It is siloed racially. There is not one arts community in this city, but there are many arts communities in this city, and very often, they do not interact with one another. So we're very fortunate to have an organization in town, a loose organization of folks referred to as Art Partide that is about breaking down racial silos within arts communities in Baltimore city, and they have organized a series of, what do they call it, monumental moments, a series of imaginings in which they will discuss what they believe should be the future of these, for the, for these sites where these Confederate monuments once stood. And so their first meeting will take place this Saturday from one to four P M. at the Arch Social Club at twenty-six twenty-four West North Avenue. So I, I want to encourage anybody that's interested in having a voice in that to be welcomed with open arms by these folks. Thank you, Mr. Council President, colleagues.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognize Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, at five P M. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for firstly Barbara Jean Partlow. I know a lot of people that was born and raised in Baltimore, particularly East Baltimore, know the Partlow family, so Barbara Jean Partlow, and also a moment of silence for the victims and families of the now two hundred and forty-nine.
If you can add to that some of the families who lost lives during the three hurricanes that we had.
Yes, the families that have lost lives on the three hurricanes, particularly in Texas and in Florida, and all of the Caribbean islands that were affected. We are there to support you.
Thank you. There have been no further business. This concludes the eighteenth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.